Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the meeting to order. You'll please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions and promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings in our deliberations and our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's a... Just a second, Peggy. There's an announcement I'd like to make. The police department is being certified by a group known as... The initials are CALIA. Can you tell me what that means?
I do not know what it means.
Okay. Anyway, this is quite an honor. They worked real hard to get this certification. And they're looking for people to come back to the room down at the end of the hallway. Second from the end.
Second door, yep.
Yeah. And to... What was it again? It's Zoom?
It's a Zoom meeting, yep.
It's a Zoom conference, or they'll ask you some questions and so forth, I guess. I don't know. But if anybody's willing to do that, they'd much... They greatly appreciate the fact that you'd come back.
Five minutes, just if you've had any interactions, just any discussion about the police department. So if you're interested, feel free.
Yes. Okay. Mayor?
All right.
Peggy? We have a swearing-in tonight of our new council member, Ms. Rissel. Very excited that she's here.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. Or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America. The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio and laws and ordinances of the City of Mount Humpy, to which I am appointed and to the best of my ability will discharge the duties of this office.
And you do not offend us if you leave for the family. Once they get out of here, go for it.
Okay, that term CALIA, abbreviation for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. The police have worked very hard on that, so we thank them. Welcome, everyone, to our meeting tonight, December 6th. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo, here. Mr. Parsons. Mr. Redding.
Here.
Mrs. Dosa.
Here.
Mr. George. Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Rissel.
Here.
Okay, we have two members absent tonight. One's had surgery and the other's got the flu. So I'd ask for a motion to excuse.
Make a motion to excuse Councilman George and Councilman Parsons.
Okay. Ms. Dosa's seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. You have before you the minutes from our November 15th meeting. November 15th seems like so long ago.
Yeah.
Any alterations or corrections that anybody has seen on the minutes? If no corrections that you see, counsel, I'd ask for a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting, the minutes from the meeting from November 15th.
Okay, Mr. Young has made a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Ms. Lingo's seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Correspondence? I do not have any correspondence in front of me. Did anybody else have any they'd like to bring before counsel? Okay. Guests and special events? We have none, I presume, Scott?
We have one. Our Director of Public Works. Sorry, can't get out of it.
So my name's Justin Wedgins. I replace Greg Cutter as the Public Works Director. I'm not wearing bright green tonight, so it probably looks a little different. So we're about a month into this for me now. And I guess we're just going to touch up on some of the road projects and things going on around town. So Hamilton Avenue is pretty much mostly done. We still have some temporary trackings put down. In contact with State of Ohio today. Pretty much weather-based. The par扶条will go down next spring when the weather breaks. They didn't... We see some of the delays. So temporary trackings need to go down. Make sure everything works out. And then there'll be the thermal plus. So Compton Road, as you've got to know, for the past almost two weeks, it's been closed for storm drain repair. So today, I believe, they finished that up. So it is now all the curves and aprons on both sides of the road have been replaced. The storm drain inlets have been replaced and reset. And now this additional storm drain that they added is completed today too. So shouldn't be any more road plates or road closures. We'll get that down off the website. The only thing that was brought up is that they're thinking about doing sod instead of seepage drawl. Sidewalks, just so it kind of takes a little bit better. They're still discussing. And then I think the guys are pretty much going to wrap it up for the year. So getting, you know, getting into some colder weather. They probably don't have enough time to start doing some of those little death repairs they talked about. So probably be back in the spring. As you've noticed, we've put up quite a few Christmas lights around town. The stars up. We've got the lights on City Hall.
Looks really good.
Our garage is lit up again. Still in the design stage for the Christmas tree for the lighting thing. So originally, they wanted the tree over here by the cannon. A little bit big for what we're able to reach. So then we thought about the fly pole over there next to the coalhouse. Just making kind of a strand Christmas tree. It'll come on with the photo cells, you know, automatically nights. Putting a bur timer and anything with that. So and then just brought up that another good spot to put this makeshift tree with strands by Holger maybe side of northwest of the building. We'll discuss this here a little bit. We can probably make that happen just as easily as the fly pole.
Okay.
It'll save everybody a walk from...
Top town.
It's a good option.
That's it for the Christmas lights. We have all the trucks ready for snow. Just hoping that we don't hit it. Fantastic. We are going to try some new things this year. We're going to try to use a little bit more liquid cell removal. Mix it into the soil. So cut back on hours that were out there over time. You know, just looking a little bit easier. We'll be sprinkling a tad more on trying out some of this liquid stuff. Very saved a lot of money by retrofitting trucks ourselves. Lots of money. So hopefully it works out. Should, but yeah. Just kind of eager to try it out, but really don't want to try it out. We dug up a sinkhole over on St. Clair. We're waiting on the waterworks to fix. Turns out years ago, they ran a water line through one of our storm drains. It's just now taking years and years for this thing to show up. So that was probably close to a month ago. Still waiting to hear back. So actually, the last email I heard that they were going to be finished with the job on Wednesday tomorrow. But they still haven't shown up. So hopefully sooner than later. As you guys have heard, Aaron has been doing lots of stuff down at the wetlands. We're looking to rate. We were able to get some wood. We replaced all the wood, all the benches. There's seven benches down there. It looks like three tables right next to the grills. We replaced basically the blue crap tops for those. We're going to dig up a couple of stumps that were in the middle of the grass. Kind of clean up a little bit. We're going to look into getting a chipper again and helping clean up all the stuff that you guys knocked down. We're part of trying to clean it up. And last but not least, the insurance risks that this guy came into town and looking around and apparently he's a playground inspector. He teaches a class. Look at our playground. From what I've gathered, our playground's about 27 years old. Typical lifespan for a place set is 15 to 20. He pointed out numerous things that needed to be attended to. Whether it be nuts and bolts that need to be shortened or broken slide pieces that need to be replaced. He actually, his first go-to thing was to tear it down and replace it. So I've been looking into trying to find replacement parts. I'm not having luck because the slides are individual pieces. We have four slides over there. Three of them are broken. I've been looking into... I'm not really experienced with grants, but there are grants available. Looking into that. Your playsets, believe it or not, range anywhere from $15,000 to $250,000. Depends on what you... How extravagant you want to get. And then usually a guy kind of... Just as a rough estimate says that anytime you're buying a playset, you figure 25% more for labor to install the playset. I'm actually waiting to hear back from Greg, the insurance adjuster, on like what we should actually do with the playset. Whether we should dismount the broken parts and block them off or just completely close off the area and close it out. So it's... So any questions? I might have answers.
I have one question, Justin. How are you on drivers for snow removal? You got four trucks, five trucks? You got enough drivers?
We still have the same four trucks. We now have four drivers.
Okay.
So when Greg retired, I took his squad. We actually replaced myself with two people. So we have four full-time guys every now and then, including myself. So it's just the same number of guys that we had in previous years. Now we don't have a temp guy going to help us.
Right.
So in an event, a large snow event, we'll be able to do 12-hour shifts. Be able to handle this small enough and we can manage it with two people. So they can sleep for 12 hours, most of them just work for 12 hours. And hopefully, once again, we don't have that kind of a big snow where...
Yeah, keep our fingers crossed.
We're out there for that long, so...
That was my only question.
Yeah?
Anybody else? Counsel?
I do have one more of a statement, I think. I think some of the other playground equipment, we get a couple of grants or a grant through Recycle America. I don't know if we can go back and ask or see if they have anything available, but I do... I believe that was the name of the Recycle America.
There are two at the top of the list that I have. Nature Works, this is a grant program from the State of Ohio for lots of outdoor stuff. Whether it's trail maintenance or playground sets, things like that. So I know last year, the year before last, Corian Township was awarded a lot of money to restructure a playset in the mid-part. So I mean, like upwards of $150,000. So I mean, the grants are there, just you have to follow by. We're just not right.
Okay.
One, how much was NCH? Right, we went and looked at that one?
I have no idea how much that was, but that was voted by a grant. North College Hill's got a new playset. Simpson. Also, I've heard they're getting a splash pad next to the new playset next year.
Is that something that We Thrive could help with?
That's exactly what I just put in my notes. Yeah, we can look into that. So we, when Monica was here through We Thrive, we got a Nature Works grant. That's how we repaved the whole track. So...
I'm nursing the flash down there.
Yeah, so we can... I'll definitely bring that up at the next We Thrive meeting because there's a lot of people involved in We Thrive that have experienced writing grants.
Yeah, because I didn't learn that yet.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, and that's something to look at. And then maybe that's a way in which to not only get new equipment, but restructure the new park.
Right, yeah.
New or updated play structures.
Parking stalls are on the track. I know some of the homeschool folks, they come in and play the playset. I know a couple of the smaller daycares in town like our parks. There's pretty much only two ways in and out. And if you keep an eye on both of them, you'll have the kids playing.
And this would be a good opportunity, like you said, to update the equipment. Get it more up-to-date, actually get newer equipment. Maybe more, add more things to it.
Yeah.
And safe, that's the key, yeah.
Some of the things they were pointing out, like, well, isn't that grand bother that that was designed? Doesn't work that way. So we'll see how...
Keep us posted.
Yeah. People have answered.
Yeah.
Have you noticed your new sign yet?
Yes, yes.
Those are compliant.
Okay.
That's what the State of Ohio recommended to put there.
Okay.
So hopefully, there's some lines, some arrows. People pay attention. I'm referring to the right front speedway. Instead of the right lane ends, yellow sign that was there, replaced it with a white right lane must turn right sign. And further up, right next to Rusty's, there's a lane assignment on it. So essentially, they have two arrows on it. One for the inner lane, which is going to have straight. And then your right lane is turn left. So hopefully, people start paying attention.
Okay. And we're just running down two open issues.
Yes.
Making sure that...
So apparently, when I spoke with you, I spoke with Karen.
Probably be back in the spring.
Her striping plans are different than my striping plans. There's... She's... You know, she's got to get with the striping guys. So they're actually hoping to be there today with the weather they can. They're going to pay that. So they still have Compton, Kenny, Stevens, Madison, and Cross County to put crosswalks in. This half a day. So coming back, it's just a matter of the weather.
Yeah, and those will be temporary till spring, yes.
Yes, but it will look just like the finished product.
Yeah.
They're going to run a temporary line next to or on the parking lines?
That's where the plan is.
That's why I figured, that's what I figured.
Her plans don't have that. Mine did, so I emailed those her today. So she's going to look into... Because those lines go all the way to Hastings. They start at Madison and continue across every parking spot. All the way to here.
Right. Yep. And there's a couple, two other smaller issues that we kind of have to close the loop on about parking, so...
All I mentioned those two, she said the one closest to the thing should be there because it's closer to 28 the crosswalk.
To Stevens, yes.
So that's just a work on those guys. Because they're able to actually put parking spots on the bus pad.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good luck. Didn't want to go like that.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much, Justin.
Thanks for staying on top of it.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you guys have fun.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay, move on to public input. Is there anybody here who would like to address counsel? Yes. Okay.
Aaron Horstling, 7328 Maple Avenue. Just wanted to give a brief update on how the wetlands project went. Honey Suckle was a little bit... Had a great turnout. Had about 19 registered volunteers. Had a couple that managed to slip through the loop. That was my error. But we had a really, really good turnout. Please report that we had no injuries. Thank goodness. We got about 60% progress completed on the front part of the park. Not as great as we were expecting. We had a great team that put in a phenomenal effort. Just came together really well and worked as a unit. Really proud of that. Just wanted to give a few thanks to the members of City Council, Denise and Joe for coming out and helping, as well as the Fire Department. They were also phenomenal help in this. And then also, we will be planning a secondary removal for February to finish up the remainder of what's at the wetlands as well as to start tackling the Honey Suckle issue at Heritage Park as well. Probably provide enough to entertain for it. Anybody have any questions?
Do you have a webpage set up for that?
I do not. It's something I'm considering quite frankly. Never really done anything like this before. So if anybody has any advice or if you're directly in the right direction, it'd be very...
I didn't know if that was something that we would do with the city or if he would do it on his own. That's why I was asking.
Can we... Those pictures I sent you, can we get them on the website with...
That's why I was asking. If we can do it on the city's end or if you, you know, so that it would be... So people could see the progress.
Yeah, and I also reached out to the Fire Department's Facebook page and sent them photos, especially what they put with firefighters that they were in a hotel on their Facebook page as well. I'm still waiting to hear back from them.
Aaron, thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron. Did a great job.
Good job, thank you.
Yep. Thanks for organizing that. It was a lot of work, way to stay with it, and I appreciate it. Because that stuff, I mean, you know, our street department would be the folks that have to take care of it, and they only have four folks. And so it's projects like that that get done by the citizens, and we greatly appreciate the effort.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, my hope, oh, Justin, my hope in the near future is that projects like this will, you know, start to inspire members of the community to care about this park again. Because I know that ever since it's been built, I've heard one of two things, that people haven't been there 12-plus years or they never knew that it existed. So I'm really hoping that these types of projects will get the wetland park back in the market.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Hello? Dominic Williams. I am the board manager for Stadium Warren Grill at 8021 Hamilton Avenue. I'm here today to address counsel for Daniel Oliver. Unfortunately, he was not able to be here. At the end of this month, the Stadium Warren Grill will be closing. Will be shut down, and we will be rebranding. Unfortunately, things haven't been going the way that us in the community thought. So we're going to rebrand something for the community. Basically, he was just saying like, for us, like, to see if we can withdraw the objection to the license through the stadium board because it will no longer be the Stadium Warren Grill. And basically... Okay, because we realize basically, we think if we go the way that the community wants us to go, it'd be better for the community. And we don't feel like we're doing that. Some senses like we're kind of like damaging, and we don't want that. So again, we're going to close down. We're going to rebrand, and we're going to try something different and better to fit Mount Humpy.
Sounds great.
Anybody have any questions or anything you can give in contact with Jennifer or Daniel Oliver?
Anybody have anything, comment?
When you say rebrand, what do you mean?
Basically, rebrand age, difference, everything. The whole, I guess, basically, we ran from the top.
Are you going to rename it or...
Yes. It will no longer be the Stadium Warren Grill.
And then when, how long will you anticipate before you reopen?
Right now, we haven't actually came with that, but it will be like April, May, maybe? Because he's even going to go in and do some remodeling, all of that. But we're still going to have the restaurant because the food is actually what's keeping us going. The food has been hit, so we're going to continue to do the restaurant. Again, we just want it more to where we actually get support from within the community. Because right now, the support is coming from other places, and we want to stay in the community. That's why we're trying to change to better the community. If you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
The little year we've been here happens to us and happens. But for the last little few little months, everything has kind of made me feel less steel. We just try something different, so we fit in. Yeah, that's what we want to do.
Sounds good. I'll get with Chief and with Scott Solomon, Law Director, about the objection. Just see what, you know, if that's what's going on, you know, what needs to happen. And, you know, we'll figure it out.
Okay, that's a good one, because again, whatever we need to do, we want to do.
Sure.
Okay. That's wonderful. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else who would like to talk to counsel? Okay, then we'll move on down to Mayor's Report. Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, a few things. I do want to give credit to the chief who was brought up with the CALIA accreditation, this process. It's only gone on for a little while. Just a little background, he's been working on this for a year and a half, is my understanding. So there's a lot of work that went into this. This is just kind of the final stage of it. There was the preliminary portion of the report, and now they're getting input from residents, stakeholders, et cetera. But it has been a year and a half-long process. Only 5% of departments in the U.S. are CALIA-accredited, and very few of our size. They're typically bigger departments. So if we get this accreditation, it means a lot. So just kind of want people to understand what the larger picture is for this accreditation. I want to give the chief credit and the rest of the department credit for all the work they've been putting into it. Because I didn't even hear much about it until recently. I know the chief, you know, just kind of mentioned the conversations they were going for accreditation, but to know how big of a scope it was and how few departments get it, I really give him a lot of credit for working towards it. So let's keep our fingers crossed and hope we get it. Christmas at Mount Humpy's coming up, the 17th. I know it's been mentioned a lot. Just want to put it back on people's radar. And then one other thing, and it's... I just kind of want to update you all because we talked a while ago about a potential property purchase, and we talked about it in executive session. So Scott actually submitted documents. And I'm talking about this outside of executive session now because Scott actually submitted some documents. He was at the beginning stages of doing a pre-loan application so that we could get the ball rolling on this. And there's been a lot of shifts and changes. And the recommendation is that the city and that it be taken... and that it be taken out of the city and CIC's hands, that's why we can't go into executive session to talk about this now. So our involvement cannot be behind closed doors if we have any involvement. At this point, we are not involved. The Mount Healthy Community Urban Redevelopment Corporation has taken on this project, and our meeting with CDF for the funding, they have submitted the documents, they met with them on Thursday, and are preparing the pre-loan documentation and application, and they're finalizing that application this Thursday. They're looking over it on Thursday, hopefully to finalize it this week or next week. But it, it's out of the city's hands now, it is something they're doing as a private corporation, they are incorporated now. They will, they're debating right now, there are two trains of thought in the application process, whether it is helpful or not to have matching funds from the city. So there may be a request coming from them to us, because in order to get funding from Community Development Fund or from the county, it, it would be, it may be helpful to have matching funds from the city. There's actually another person advising them that's better to go and asking for everything. So I'm not quite sure where that will be yet, but I'm telling you this because if, in their application process, they're told they should have matching funds from the city, I may be coming to you with a request. And at that point, we'd have all the details, we'd have the property, we'd have all the explanation of it. Not trying to sound cagey here, just don't want to ruin their real estate deal. So if, through that application, they come to us, I will work with Scott, both Scots, and I may have something in front of you with details, much more details before the next meeting. So I just want to give you a heads up on that, there may be a request for funding towards it. At that point, you'd have to decide if it's something we can afford. It's in the same range that we were looking at spending as the city. But you'd have to, we'd have to decide if we could afford it, we'd also have to decide what it would look like, whether it's a grant, whether, this is just brand new to us, we've always used the CIC or the city. So we're gonna have to figure it out with Law Director from the Chief, I just want you to have a heads up that there may be a request coming. You'd have to, you'd also have to decide if you would want to, you know, make the decision at that meeting, or the two reading rule. So just want you to ponder that stuff, as things become, I have to make sure we do things right. So as a request comes, I can work on it, but I wouldn't be able to meet with you individually to talk to you about it, because that would violate sunshine laws, so, and open meeting laws. So you would see it in your packets if there is something, and we'll discuss it then. And we'll be able to answer any questions or whatever else at that point. So I'm sorry, I don't mean to be secretive or cagey, but real estate deals are crazy, and hopefully we'll have some details nailed down soon. So hopefully we'll have that in front of you at the next meeting. And then, the last thing, we have a planning commission meeting this month, and it has always been the practice that the mayor and city manager were on planning commission, and it was filled out with appointees. This is the first time that we've had a new city manager since the charter. And the practice of having the city manager is not automatic. So we actually have to appoint Scott, if that is your will. I would like Scott to be appointed to planning commission, so I am appointing Scott, and I am asking for your approval. We do have a meeting on the nineteenth, so under new business, I would appreciate if you agree that we should have the city manager on planning commission, that we, that council make a motion to approve the appointment of Scott Bauer to the planning commission. That is something I request, if that passes tonight, then we can move forward and have our planning commission on the nineteenth. We know we have one absence, so we will need four there. So I do ask you to have Scott on there, Bill was on there the whole time. But that was before the charter, so we never really had to worry about that. Yep.
Oh, Mr. Redding?
Uh, two questions, one concerning Scott on planning commission.
We can just go ahead and do it tonight, right? It's just a voice. Oh, I thought you said, yeah, I thought you said the nineteenth or something, yeah.
The meeting's on the nineteenth, sorry. So I'd like it approved under new business, so we can have it in place by then, sorry.
And then, second, just a little confusion.
Yeah.
So the CDC is meeting with, you, you mentioned Mount Healthy Urban?
No, so the CDC is not actually called Community Development Corporation. When they incorporated, the attorney said they have to have the name Community Urban Redevelopment Corporation in their name legally, in order to be eligible for the type of financing and funding that's required for these big property purchases.
So their official name is Mount Healthy?
Mount Healthy Community Urban Redevelopment Commission. They are looking, they're focusing on property right now, instead of branding and publicity, they want to get this project done. They are debating branding with a simpler name, where in that case would be Mount Healthy Community Urban Redevelopment Corporation, doing business as, and then something more simple.
Okay, yes.
So, yeah, sorry, so the CDC, they originally were calling themselves a CDC, but they're legally a Community Urban Redevelopment Corporation, exactly like College Hill is. And that was required, that was something that was thrown in. CDF, because I know there's a lot of acronyms, is the Cincinnati Development Fund. The Cincinnati Development Fund is able to work financing in non-traditional ways. They have banks that underwrite them, but their specifically, their specific purpose is to redevelop low-income areas. We have two census tracts in Mount Healthy, both of them are low-income, so our entire city is eligible for financing through the CDF. So it's a non-traditional way.
Sure.
I mean, a new organization with no history is eligible for a lot of funding, which wouldn't be able to otherwise. Yeah, and I'll, I'll give you more details on the property and all that when the request comes. There's no way I would have you vote on money without details. But I, I have to wait for them to give me the go-ahead on that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, sorry, a lot of acronyms. Some details, not enough. And that's the end of our report, sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for the Mayor? Okay, and then we'll move on to the city manager's report, Mr. Scott Bauer.
Let's see, first thing, Kathy took it upon herself, you got these on your desk, this is a little calendar for next year, just when our offices will be closed and all the city council meetings, so if you happen to see anything that needs to be changed, let us know. But just something you can keep at your desk for convenience. Let's see, we talked about CLIA, the tree lighting, we're hoping Thursday to get a full schedule of events. It's gonna be on a postcard, we think, then we'll put it up on the board out front to do our part, and eventually we'll get a, a banner that we'll hang across Hamilton Avenue. But.
I've had a few texts asking about it, they haven't seen the signs.
I mean, it's, it's great everyone keeps asking, I mean, it's frustrating we don't have all the information, but, I mean, at least people know about it and are excited about it, so I mean, it's a good thing, but, yeah, slowly, slowly coming together, so. Let's see, Friday's the deadline for the Harrison property, for Peggy. The other side, if you go to Gold Star, right behind it on Harrison, there's a couple of lots that are open there. One we own, there's someone who's interested in purchasing it and building on it. So Friday's the deadline, I talked to the woman today, she said she is still interested, we have not received any offers officially yet, so we'll see what happens. But, yeah, hopefully Friday, she puts in an offer, I'll let you know what happens. The new ambulance is in service, it's already made some runs, looks great, sounds great. News on the old ambulance, so the trade-in value, or the, the sale value of this thing is probably like four grand, something like that. Well, the police department has expressed interest in converting it to a crime scene vehicle. So, I mean, it, you know, if it was like twenty-five or fifty grand we could get out of it, we'd probably want to sell it and take the cash, right? But four grand, it seemed like it'd be pretty good to, I mean, I don't know if anyone, whoever's been down in the basement where the police are, they are very short on space, so if they can move a lot of this into a dedicated vehicle, it'd be great for them. It's pretty minimal to convert it, you know, they just need an open area to put stuff in, so, I mean, that's what an ambulance is, so it seems like a good fit. So that's the intention for the old ambulance. So that should be happening probably in the next couple of months here.
Where would they keep this at?
At the moment, we're thinking Northwest Auto, there's no one in there right now. We've had one person interested in renting out the space, I talked to Chief, that there won't be anything sensitive in the vehicle, so he's willing to, you know, if we can rent the space to someone who just needs storage, we could do that as well. You know, they would keep it locked, the, the supplies that would be in that, it would be used in a crime scene, but it, it's not the actual crime scene evidence, right? We would properly maintain that here in the building, so, you know, the ambulance should still be safe as a vehicle there, so. And of course, we would only use that space, we would properly vet the people that would use the space. So I think we can still rent it out and get some money out of it, but also use it for the ambulance, so. Let's see, update on the police chief search, it was posted last Wednesday, I don't think anyone has applied yet. I know there's some interest, the deadline's January fourth. The assessment, the third-party assessment will be February eighteenth, and the new chief will hopefully, hopefully be in here by March fifteenth. I think I kind of ran through that deadline last time, or that timeline last time. For the interim, the plan is that we've got two sergeants, Greg Nolte and Alan Fath. Whoever the daytime sergeant is will be the interim chief that day, and we'll have a, that's got a payroll code to it, but basically they'll get a little bit of an up-charge to kind of compensate for having that responsibility. So that'll be what's done in the interim, to make up for that. Let's see. The incident that happened at the Heat Events Center, just wanted to give an update. I mean, we knew they had shut down all the upcoming events that were gonna happen, I mean, this is the one that had the big shooting out in the parking lot, right? We met with management, and they agreed to install the Flock system, so that's the camera that can read the license plates. So at the very least, you can have a record of what vehicle was there. I believe the, I think the example the Chief gave, I think it was that night, someone from Kentucky, I think, had called a hospital that, you know, this vehicle with fifty bullet holes in it and blood inside showed up at the hospital, and they had no idea it was from, or if they had this, what was it?
Airport.
Oh, the airport, airport. Well, if we had this Flock system, that, you know, they called us to say, hey, was this vehicle at the, at the crime scene? If we'd had the Flock system, we could have at least known, and it just, it just makes it so much easier to track some of these vehicles. So they agreed to, on their dime, install this on the facility. I think they're looking into other options as well, I think some of their, a lot of their cameras need to be upgraded, stuff like that. But they did kick out the tenant. And that same tenant was trying to install a hookah bar next door, so that won't happen. So some other issues went away with it. But they're, they're taking our advice, and it seems like they're taking it serious, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully good things will, will happen. That's Heat. I was gonna use this time to walk through the budget, unless people had other questions about anything else I've brought up. I know there's a few ordinances in here, I was gonna kind of talk about them all together now, if that's fine, unless there's any other questions. Let's see here, so most, all, we've got the general appropriations ordinance, one, two, we have four. Four salary ordinances that'll be approved tonight. Let's see, there's one kind of summary page that's in here, it might be, it's kind of the third to last page here, if you want to look at that. That's just a high-level summary of the entire budget by department, so you can see police, fire, parks. So it looks like this guy, if you got it. So you can see the total amount of expenses, we're basically budgeting a six percent increase compared to the 2022 budget. Most of that's, vast majority of that's salary increases. In general, the PD is going up three percent, but we're also adding two full-time patrol officers. Fire department, Fire Department's a little weird, what you will be passing tonight is a three percent increase. But what we've budgeted is probably about a seven to eight percent, because we're gonna be negotiating, and we anticipate once the union negotiations are complete, that it will be probably more, more along those lines. So I'm not sure exactly, and again, that'll come in front of you guys in the next few months to approve anyways, but we try to at least kind of account for that in some manner in the budget. Council, the amounts that are on there, you guys agreed last meeting to do zero percent, so those are the same as 2022. Basically, anyone else, any non-union, are five percent increases. There's a few exceptions, Chief Lawson will be a ten percent, that's part of just a general, we've been stepping him up year over year, just as the department has transitioned more to full-time. That's just kind of part of that agreement that we had with him, but in general, everyone else is five percent increases. We're adding back the pool in-house, that's one of the reasons we added one more headcount to the Public Works Department, was to make that easier to, to manage. Other big things, we've got some server network upgrades, that's probably gonna double our IT expenses next year. We're trying to move, I don't know if anyone's been in the basement and seen the closet that stores a lot of the stuff. It's behind some lockers that you have to move anytime you want to get to it, and you open it up, and it's got the old phone system, it's just a spider, I mean, it's spider web of wires, it's pretty crazy looking, yeah. So the goal is to move that to the main floor, get the server in there, it's the old jail, the office next to where my office is. So that'll, that'll increase our, our network costs, our IT costs. Something that is not in the budget, and it's something we do every year, there's no, the, the work that'll be done on Forest and Madison next year, it's an OPWC project, so that's not in here, that could be about 1.4 million. We're matching thirty percent of that, so that's something we typically approve at the end of the year, but we never know exactly when the project's gonna start, when it's gonna end, what the amounts could be. But it's just kind of a, a big expense, it's not included in here, we know it's coming, but we typically end up approving it at the end of the year, once we know exactly what it is. Those are the highlights. Are there any questions? I mean, again, the, the biggest things is we're adding two to the Fire Department, or two to the Police Department, two full-time, one full-time to the Fire Department, but that will also decrease how many part-time hours we have. I think that's the big changes in personnel. I think that, I mean, that's, that's the highlights, I think.
The, the full-time PD additions, yes, will reduce part-time officer, but the problem is we can't find part-time officers right now, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's same with police and fire, I mean, we're adding one full-time on fire, just to try to create more stability. Again, it's just harder to find people that are part-time, that are fine without benefits. And, yeah, same with on the police side, I mean, I think at one point, we maybe had as many part-timers as we had as full-timers, now it's gonna be almost all full-time. We've got one, one part-time, two part-time, right now, and ten full-time. So we have twelve full-time and two part-time. Whereas it used to be like six and six, or six and eight, something like that is what it used to be, so. So, I mean, that's the high level for the budget, and then, yeah, each of these individual ones will be just the payroll increases that we agreed upon and that I ran through here, so. I mean, I can answer questions as we go through it as well, when we're voting on them, but if you have questions now, feel free.
I guess my, I have a question, is there a first reading on most of these?
Uh, yeah, well, we have to, yeah.
We need one more council member here to vote on it anyway, so.
Right.
First reading's all we can do, I guess.
Yep, yep, that's fine. Yeah, if we can't, if, if we don't have enough at the next meeting, we will definitely have to call a special meeting. So just be aware that these things have, are, have to be passed by the end of the year, so that we're approved to spend it in the following year.
Yeah, December twenty-third would be a nice time for a special meeting, or the twenty-fourth, something like that.
So other than that, I, that's it for my report, again, unless there's questions, and again, feel free to ask questions when we're voting on it.
Okay, council, we're gonna, any questions for the state, the manager?
I got one question, on the business side, when a new business comes in, just as down there where the heat, does the city notify of any way of what's a business going in? Do we have any type of procedure of, I would say, application, but of a city coming in for occupancy, different things like that, that should be inspected before they're granted in occupancy permits?
When there's a property purchase, you know, we catch those pretty quick. I don't, is there some, I don't want to say, I don't know.
No, that's something that's been talked about, getting for the businesses, a new business.
I mean, I think that's when, yeah, I think that's when a business needs to be inspected, when Fire Department go in and, you know, occupancy. I mean, I think that's when, yeah, I think that's when a business needs to be inspected, when fire department go in and, you know, occupancy. You know, they need to designate how many people can be in this building, you know, before they actually are able to open. So, I don't know if that's something that can be looked at. Then you know what kind of establishment's going in, what's, what business is going in. You know, you need to set those boundaries and those rules day one. Then you don't have issues with things as time comes up, maybe.
Sure.
Try to get ahead of it, so.
Doesn't the building department catch that? It should be an application made for. Well, yeah, occupancy and inspections and, you know, you, you.
I can get with Bill Knight to see.
They do much more than driving nail on the wall. They need a permit, so.
Right, right.
I would think anytime they're changing from, say, an event center to whatever, they, they would definitely need an occupancy permit. They're probably going to sit, change something inside, so that, that would trigger a permit right there. Obviously, they could do that, but they'd be in violation, so, but yeah.
Yeah, the, the hookah lounge that was supposed to go in next to heat, we got a notification of that, but I think it was mainly because they had applied for a temporary liquor permit. Otherwise, I'm trying to think of how we would have even known that was going in. Um, I don't know if that, if I'd heard from Gordon, if Gordon would have heard what was going in there or not. I don't know.
What's a hookah lounge?
Well, there's the hookah one around the corner on Hilltop that was going in. Was it another one?
Uh, that's, that's the one I'm talking about next to heat.
Okay.
Something I'll discuss with Bill Knight and see just kind of what, uh.
Yeah, I think there should be some sort of procedure of how, you know, a business comes in, what's coming in and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I will, I'll look into that, see if we can't formalize a process. I mean, I, you know, I think it's definitely a prudent thing to do. I'm, I'm imagining for the, for the heat event, you know, it's probably one of those where whatever they were approved for, you know, they probably just did this on their own, right? I mean, it's kind of, you know, but I, I agree that at least having a process in place could probably catch some of this.
If something goes in and the city doesn't know about it, then the city should have the option, go and say, hey, you can't open. You know, or you need to shut down till we get this procedure, to get everything situated.
Yeah, I will, I will look into that.
I know we have, if we ran into this with that Clara Lancy, we wouldn't give her an occupancy permit.
Owner, where it runs into the problem because they'll lease the, they'll lease out the space, but they don't know if they can put a business in there or not, or what type of business, and then they've already leased.
Right. And then the renter trying to run a business realizes they don't have the ability to open that business.
After they've already rented it, yeah.
We ran into this before and there was a little bit. I, I think we need to look at it again. I agree with you a hundred percent. There, when we did the, um, rental permit for, um, apartments and for rental houses, where you had to have an inspection between tenants or once every five years. And, um, we were sued for that. Uh, they sued us claiming it was a warrantless, warrantless, um, search. And I know that kind of threw cold water on the business side of it. Uh, cause that was something we were looking at doing next. And we ended up dropping that altogether, cause a lot of cities were going through the same lawsuits.
Yes.
And typically, what we do is we let the big cities fight it through their legal departments, figure out what goes through the Ohio Supreme Court. And then we just adopt what shakes out. But that's been a while, so things should shake out, so. I think that's a good idea. Yeah, just kind of the history there.
Look into it.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, we're gonna move on to finance director's report then. Melanie Brandon's.
I have no report.
Okay. We have no, uh, second readings on ordinances or resolutions, so we'll move on to the first readings of ordinances. First one is twenty-two dash two zero zero zero. An ordinance to set compensation for the elected officials of the city of Mount healthy.
So, this is the, what the twenty-twenty-three annual rate will be, and it is the same as the twenty-twenty-two, so.
Okay. So, first reading, counsel? December sixth. Okay. Next one is ordinance number twenty-two dash two zero zero one. An ordinance to set compensation for certain full-time employees of the city of Mount healthy.
So, the only one, let's see, city manager adds zero percent, police chief is zero percent. We do have built into the budget, um, Chief Damasi's payout. Um, I mean, it could fluctuate a little bit, but, so that's not technically accounted for in the, um, police chief. But, uh, his rate's the same. Fire chief is the ten percent increase. Director of Streets is zero percent. I mean, that, that's because he got, uh, his raise in the second half of the year. I believe Streets, five. The second two are zero, cause they started the middle of the year. Uh, five for police clerk, five, zero for finance director, since she got her raise beginning, or second half of the year. And zero percent and five percent, if that, uh, helps at all. Most are staying the same, but.
Do you have a fi- an assistant finance?
We do now.
Do you?
Mm-hmm.
So, admin liaison is sitting next to you.
Mm-hmm.
And Jen, I think you'd met, you just met her right on Friday.
Yes.
Yep, she's the assistant finance. So, she'll be downstairs and she's got payroll experience. Um, she'll be the assistant finance.
All right.
So, she'll be splitting her time down there and up here.
Questions, counsel? First reading?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the next ordinance, ordinance number twenty-two dash two zero zero two. An ordinance to set compensation for certain appointed officials and part-time employees of the city of Mount healthy.
Let's see, these are all five percent increases, except for chief building official and property maintenance. I think over the past couple of years, something that, uh, Bill Coker had talked with Gordon and with Bill Knight, just that they were pretty well underpaid compared to other municipalities. Uh, so it's a little more just because we've been trying to get them more up to. I think the goal was to get them to thirty-five, but, uh, so they're a little bit more just because we've been trying to step them up a little more each year. Um, the seasonal is technically a little more. Um, that's a two-dollar increase. I don't know what the percentage is. It's thirteen percent, but good guy that's come back for, past three or four years. I think he's about to graduate college, so trying to keep him, give him a couple of dollar increase.
I never had that problem. I asked for a raise. They just told me hit the trail. Questions or comments, counsel? First reading?
First reading, yes. Starting to think you're trouble.
Okay, our next ordinance, twenty-two dash two zero zero three. An ordinance to set compensation for certain full-time fire department employees of the city of Mount healthy.
So, these are all three percent increases from twenty-twenty-two. And again, that's the one where I s- if you try to tie it out to the budget, we've budgeted more than this to account for the, the union negotiations. But at least starting January one, they'll start with this and then, uh, we'll negotiate increases from there. And we did three percent basically to match with the other unions.
Questions or comments, counsel? First reading?
Yes.
One more ordinance, twenty-two dash two zero zero four. An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Mount healthy during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
So, I walked through kind of the summary page. The other page, I mean, it's just, that's the format that the county likes to see. So, that's, that's what we'll formally send to Hamilton County. Um, but I mean, it matches the summary. It's just in a different, different format.
Questions on this, counsel? No questions? That is the last of the ordinances and resolutions. Move on down the line to the first reading of, uh, old business.
First reading also?
Yeah, first reading on this one. We don't have anybody to vote for it, anyway.
I figured as much. You just didn't say.
Old business, counsel?
Just one thing.
Yes, Mr. Redding?
Uh, the, uh, wetlands and all the work that was done down there Saturday, uh, I would just like to read off the names of the folks. And a- actually, some of these folks are not even from Mount healthy and they came up, came up to pitch in. So, uh, there was a gentleman from Pleasant Ridge and a lady from Northside that, that came over to help. So, I'm just gonna read these real quick. There's a Tim Boeing, uh, Karen Arnett, you know her, uh, Michael Fraley, uh, Judy Horton, Hortman, Alex Kasek, Eric Tobin, uh, Renee, who, uh, lives in Mount healthy. I can't make out her last name. Steve Green, Keith Peace, Josh King, Jake Von Dehor, I think, believe, I believe he's, uh, a firefighter. And so is Josh and Keith. Uh, Tom Davis, he has worked with us in the past, uh, to help, help us with tree issues. William Smith, Anthony Vergara, Ellen Thomas Arnold, uh, Zeke Montgomery, Denise, and Eli Lutz, and of course, Aaron. So, uh, thank you, uh, for all those who are watching and those who aren't. I, we definitely appreciate your help.
Very nice, Joe. Any other old business?
Justin kind of hit on a little bit ago about the, uh, talk about the tree lighting things. You know, that's, we kind of talked before the meeting. He brought up during his report, um, of a spot. That's, so that's kind of where I was thinking of a spot, trying to find something in the city. Maybe I'll say anything suggestions, but trying to find something that would, something we can do every year, so there's not a question every year. You know, he brought up the, you know, we've actually solved all the world's problems here right before the meeting, so. Um, but, you know, I think it's a place that we need to, you know, and, and set a date. You know, we talked about setting a date, you know, that it's kind of the same date every year. Um, I know the business association wants to have Santa come in, do all, you know, do those things. So, I think that's something we need to work on with both the city and the business association, try to get a date set. And then if we could have a location like that to set that up, I think that'd be great, uh, something in downtown, in, in the city here, instead of, not, nothing wrong with being up here. But people are, you know, as they drive by in the evening time, I think it'd be nice, so.
Keeps the people going into the businesses and not away and never.
Right, yeah, it's, it's focusing right there where everybody's at, so.
Agreed.
So, you know, any suggestions there? But you know, you brought up a great idea with the, with the lights coming down off the building and, you know, it'd be great to do, since we already have that building there, so.
Which building was that again, Paul?
Yeah, Northwest.
Northwest Auto?
So, we have the park there with the, the little, uh, right across from.
Shelter.
Shelter right across from Goody's there.
So, on Kenny Avenue.
Kenny Avenue, yeah, okay. But I think you'll still be able to see it from the, you know, driving up Hamilton Avenue, either way. I think you'll be, still be able to see those lights to be bright enough to pique your attention.
Yeah, it'd be a lot closer to the center of town. I agree with Paul, that was a great, a great spot.
Okay.
Just to add to that, we, um, family went to Mason's, uh, Christmas tree lighting, uh, Saturday the third. And so, I grabbed as much information as I could, business cards, things like that. Uh, put up, they put on a pretty good event. Uh, obviously, they've probably been doing it for years. Uh, again, they use the same Saturday. They even put a clock out, a little digital board where they do a countdown, starting like from twenty days or something like that. So, uh, just some things we may be able to copy from them to, uh, you know, to make ours a little bit more popular. And it was pretty popular with the kids up there, so, um, yep, be, I'd be happy to help out.
Is the city in charge of this, Justin, or is the business association, or is it a combination?
Business.
The business association, that's the, uh, the, they were, um, they just talked about a banner. I thought we could, we could put them up, but I haven't heard anything about a banner, uh, being done, to be involved.
I know we had one last year, not going across the road, but along Lake of the Woods.
So, Denise?
Denise H- Denise Hayes.
I actually gave her one of the old banners that went across.
Oh, did you?
I actually gave her one of the old, uh, banners that went across Hamilton Avenue, so she has an exact template of what it was.
Good, good.
I just suggested something vague like the second weekend of December. I should put a date on it.
Yeah.
For using the same banner over and over again.
That's a good idea.
I don't know when the banner's gonna be done, but I can, well, it's a lot of days away.
Hey, you guys were great. Last year, we tried to get the, uh, what are they called, sandwich boards? We brought them all, the wind was so bad, they kept falling over and we finally just took them back.
So, we believe it, so, but, I mean, um, actually, so, the original problem for that tree, I spoke with Dwight about maybe on the fly pole. He liked the idea, we lumped it, but now probably have to talk to Phil about the new location, with pretty much the same design, just spraying the lights, you know, implying the Christmas tree. The new location, he's okay with it. I mean, we could make a.
I like that location. It makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, he's gonna cut down everybody's walk from over here to there and then.
Yeah.
Direct pound, but also you're gonna see it, you're having, probably two pounds, so. We could make a.
Yeah, I mean, the city's commitment's basically the lights for whatever the tree ends up being and hanging the banner. I mean, that's, I mean, we'll put on the board whatever the events are to help support it and.
Who's supplying the banner?
They are getting it done. Is it Express Graphics? I think that's who they said they used before.
Yeah, we used them last year for all the other posters and stuff.
Okay, that was, thank you. That was my questions. We still on old business? Any other old business? New business? Mr. Redding?
Yes, uh, would like to make a motion to appoint Scott to the, uh, not the BZA, the Planning Commission. Sorry, almost put, got, uh, got you on a different.
Okay, Mr. Redding has made a motion to appoint our law, or city manager. As an appoint, as an appointee to the Planning Commission. Do I have a second? Mr. Ossos seconded discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Congratulations, Scott. Another evening shot.
Do my best.
Another meeting.
Another meeting.
Any other new business, counsel?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Lingo has made a motion to adjourn. No arguments from me. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Young has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.